Okay.
And I'm going to turn this over to you, Andrew, the analyst.
So we do have the RPQ written, I already sent it to Ken for his minor review. We do have to come up with a date, so I'm going to make a motion to accept the contingency that Kent thinks it's okay and we all agree on the application dates after Kent reviews it, so.
One second then.
We just need to keep them in this.
Alright.
Alright, yeah. This is not on the agenda, but we do have the highway scan report. They have bounced through other office with funds in for the highway department.
I will make a motion to approve any authority from our department.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Alright.
That's Brad's side.
You're not a pacifist. I know.
Okay, we'll move on to the transfers. One thousand dollars from postage to burning an amputism. Five thousand, you can pay the patient in fullness.
I'll make the motion to that, Andrew.
I'll second.
This is favor.
Alright.
Health Department, housekeeping maintenance repair, twenty seven dollars eighty cents to liability insurance.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
This is better.
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, I don't know how you want to handle the additional requests, if you want me to just go through and read them and then say what motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Inland, we have public safety. Admin records, two thousand, two dollars, transport officer, nine hundred and nine dollars, sheriff retirement, twenty four thousand nine hundred. Total of ninety seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, accident report, for admin records, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Sheriff's pension trust, retirement, ten thousand dollars. County general, emergency management for the deputy directors, thirty seven dollars, code red weather, five thousand five hundred dollars. Ambulance department, assistant director, four thousand six hundred forty five dollars, paramedics, twenty two thousand dollars. In the jails, veteran, man training, one thousand six hundred sixteen dollars, deputy man training, one thousand four hundred ninety two dollars. Service report department, expert witness, five thousand dollars, admin assistance probation, two thousand four hundred twenty five dollars, old thirty teens, five thousand dollars. Plane commission, consulting fees, forty thousand dollars, twenty thousand twenty two dollars. Meeting for the board members, seven hundred fifty dollars, education training, three thousand dollars. Commissioner's budget, capital outlay for CCMG, twenty three dash nine, amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, economic development contract, amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total, five hundred ninety two thousand and seventy five. County district manager, operating supplies, five thousand dollars. MTH fund, lease grant for enterprise, forty three thousand three hundred sixty dollars. That was not budgeted. Ballworks, one hundred thirty five thousand dollars, MTH, one hundred seventy eight thousand three hundred sixty dollars. MTH restrictive, the other part of the lease grant, in the product, forty three thousand three hundred sixty dollars. Lit, special purpose for the jail, capital outlay, five hundred thousand dollars. Nine one one, overtime, twenty thousand dollars, the feedback development, child care ready grant, and about a hundred thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Just to mention on some of those salary ones, it's just the prenet form of salary ordinance. Like, it wasn't supposed to be a ten percent tax, some of that's maybe, so.
Something I could say out of the top.
So that should have been very good, that was one here. Fifty hundred and sixty thousand. Well, we, and I didn't have counsel reach out to me because we're not going to approve any agreement until the council first finishes. She has to advertise it, we can go ahead and kind of prove that, but it doesn't mean us, or her, yes, Carol, to question, aren't you saying none of this was budgeted? All the rest, I would give that one for the vision, that one, I guess, I know. None of this is explained, it's just down in your own paper.
No.
Well, she got to explain it, she got to explain it.
I'm not saying this, but everything, yeah.
Well, a lot of times, that information is passed on to the council commissioners to, what the additional, we don't put the detail in print or on the individual.
That would never discuss that you're making.
We're discussing it today, it was the.
Discussing it.
I know, but, but we have to approve it first, the additional, and she has to advertise it, and then once the council then.
Wait, which one do you question, Carol?
I'm questioning the forty thousand right now, what is that? That was never, but it, the which one, on the planning commission, or it's already?
That's what we've been talking about for the, no, it was not like that, but it just came up.
It was probably requested at one point, because they've always needed attorney, and just never had one, the health department, same way. Um, we, we have Kent's firm represent for flat twenty thousand, the county, just the commissioner, for, and whatever he did, he does a thousand other things. From time to do the county, the planning commission, the health department, you have a ton of hours. And so that's what we're trying to get these other departments to budget correctly, so they can function.
And what do we charge for these stores farm, when, I mean, what do we charge fees, kind of to that people?
There's, there are fees right now, it's on the slide you can see, I can show, it's in, it's in our zoning plan.
Which is very minimal, right?
Not really, no, it, no, if you want to stop by, we'll go word for word, it's not, it protects the county.
And what is the government charge?
A lot more.
But save.
No, not, not for the, not for the permits, their legal fees are a lot higher.
Oh, for the, for the legal, okay, but for the, and we can discuss that in the planning commission if they want to raise that, I think we have, the last time they brought it up, the member brought it up.
We had what, seven farm, we're trying to go in here now, so we're not charging them.
I don't know where the number seven came from, I've only been contacted, and that's fine, and I'm not saying it's not true, because I guess you can probably get on something that, um. There's probably a way out there, you can track, who all look at Fountain County by rich, I've only personally contacted by three.
Three is all the.
And these three won't even be in this county until practically twenty eight or thirty. We got a long time.
And it's two hundred and fifty thousand for the, for the supposed economic development. Well, who's paying for rocks, uh, selling now?
He, he worked, he worked, he is the, is he consultant, or a? Part-time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, just remember, this, there's nothing said, it's not here, um, the council has a final say on stuff like this, so that's why it's getting improved here, but it could be dead in the water, that's two hundred fifty, it could be dead in the water.
But it is, it is not, I'm going right, it is not out of line at all, Warren County budget, one hundred and seventy thousand for their economic development person. At the size of county, he has one major project going right now, trying to get fiber to the county. This position will have the entire county, every city and town represent, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars economic development, that's a steal. Look at, look at any county around. I mean, I know it's a couple of hundred, don't get me wrong, but it is a steal, and if we don't turn this thing around, if you look at what's happened in Fountain County. We are a, every year, every since about ten years, we lose populations, because there are people passing away and no one replaces. So we either turn it around now, or continue to go down.
That part of it.
Yeah. So second on development, also since I'm here, Carol.
Well, I don't see how, how to really, you know, I have to not do that, I think we do protect, not.
Yeah, well, you gotta have people first live, and that's another thing, if we can do some counseling around the county, you know, people from Lafayette. Good, good school system, I'd much rather put my kid in Fountain County school than, than another one, I don't want to step out of line here, than a county school at this point, or someone. So that's, you know, attract people here, pay taxes here, live here, buy stuff at grocery stores, I mean, that's what we're trying to do to turn the, turn it around.
That is, you should see your return, I mean, that's a whole point, you should see your return.
Schools, I mean, our, our school system, Fountain Central went to one A, first time in, and Huffington, actually, some of the only growth in our county, went to two A, that's never happened either. So, and this, we've got, we have to address it.
And why does this, uh, enterprise grant, because why does that not matter?
That's, that's, that was a contractual obligation that was not in the budget, that's actually committed.
But why wasn't it?
I can't answer that, I have to ask me that, that's a new question. Fountain County has, housing is a great opportunity in Fountain County, you don't have to go as far as Lafayette, Timber Sealy is getting ready to open in Montgomery County, but four hundred jobs. New Core just had a massive expansion, it's going to add two hundred jobs. All of those citizens that live here, we have a LIT, that's a local income tax, all of those people who can attract to live here in Fountain County. That's going to increase our asset value in Fountain County, and that's going to massively increase your LIT. Schools, it's about seven thousand dollars per people in the seat, federal dollar, you get families here that send their students to our schools, that raises everything for our school system. So that is, it is, you can stay in the nineteen fifties and with it on the bond, or you can engage, economic development is very comprehensive, it's, it's industrial, it's wide industrial, it's, it's general business, but you have to have a, you want the residents, you want the people to live in the county to support all that. And if, if you're not looking five years down the road, ten years down the road, twenty years down the road, it's, we're going to wind, our county's going to wind up the size of Warren County. Now, additional information are absolutely, they're legal, we, the way Fountain, in my opinion, we represent several counties, we represent several towns, we represent several cities, the way Fountain County budgets is very unique, they write that on a very low margin. And then as things come up, you have to have additional, so it's just, it's, it's absolutely legal and it's, it's unique, it's not the way, and just because other, other municipalities feel that way, that doesn't make it wrong, but it, it's unique, and, and I, I've, in, in some counties where they budget on a much broader scale. You have additional that come through, then that, that's, I think, a legitimate objection, the way, in my opinion, compared to, based on the other clients we really present, Fountain County is very unique, and, and the additional appropriations are, it's, it's a way that you, you're going to fund stuff as it comes up, and you're going to have two pages of additions.
And where are we with this ready grant for childcare? That is going to be for three years for the twenty three thousand, I have not heard what kind of projects were in place for advocate and clinic then, said that they have some projects that they want to submit through this, so I tried to reach out to Ryan Sowers, I've not heard anything from the advocates. Okay, so we will touch base with them at the next meeting, too, because I know they've been doing any years of their schools, but, um, time is of the essence, and we'll get to work on that by the end of this month, so that we'll know what type of projects are, but that is what that money is for, but again, childcare, and all those that ties in together with all this workforce, the economic development growth and everything, even though you, you would say, no, it doesn't, but it all works together.
I can say right now, there's people, advocates saving their kids, it's hit the new county to work with because of no more extra kids, advocate, childcare is, I, I don't make this right, I, but up there, terrible. If I wanted to take my child someplace right now, there would be, there would be no license place to take him, you can maybe find someone at home babysitting, but no license for it.
Only fulfilling, I think, a hundred and forty four spots, does that number sound right? Um, so, you know, we share with Warren County, Fountain Warren, Petstar, and I think there's a little something about Central, but yeah, there's a need out there, Carol, and that is why that money's in there, and we're trying to get something in Fountain County. Any other questions?
They specifically left the economic development, what are they used for?
The sound. Well, it's not the sound, he's got, he's got to have a better.
They had a hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, you got travel, you got.
Well, and he is, he is not a county employee, that's this position, no matter who it is, say he, she, whoever, it is not a county employee, they, they get benefits in that too, benefits can be thirty thousand dollars a year for health benefits, that's what we pay, the county pays that per individual, well, twenty, twenty-something. People don't understand benefits and good, well, you do if you're shop employee, they're outrageous. So that, it, it's all, it's all in there.
Carol, I could tell you from Montgomery County, just about how well the development talk goes on there. Um, without, without the economic development plan, that would be what I'm not without, because there was a commitment for that business coming to town for housing to be developed, I'm developing over four hundred units right now of housing in Montgomery County, just to accommodate for that important core. Uh, the Montgomery County administrative building was donated to the community foundation to create a childcare facility, that's where the place of childcare facility, all of these are part of that economic development, you know, it's, it's, if you don't build it, they will not come, the big businesses are not going to help it, you don't have infrastructure for it. And that plan will create that roadmap for the constructor, how are we going to develop and deploy, without that plan, any large business, I told them, I told them on the panel, says, um, where's your child, they don't have child, where's your house, how, still going with underhand, they'll go to, and any other county, you know, yes, it's a lot of money, but it's kind of necessary if we want to grow, if you don't want to grow, want to stay where we are.
And it's probably the only county I, I know that I can develop. I don't know many others that don't have, and when Brandon and I attend these meetings and feel like fools, because we have no idea what they're talking about, and all these people around us are moving, moving.
Because all we've done for years, Carol, is react to things that kind of are like, we, we don't have a plan in place, we're trying to work on that, and we have individuals on council commissioners that are willing to fight to, to get some of those things in place for the county. And we're not used to it, it's something new. But if we don't do anything, like Kent and Roger said, what are we going to be? So we need to invest some things in Fountain County, we want to see some growth, and we want to cross, and be a place to present, a good place to live.
Okay, who took over the position of the ready grant county?
A body.
What do you mean, who took over the position?
Didn't she, lady?
For us, she's still, she's still working her time to upload the documents, but Scott Walker is working with her, so, yeah, that stuff is not stopped, it's still missing. And they've been very good at working with Fountain County, helping us along the way, because they know that we don't have an economic development person, they thought it was, that I was that person, but I'm not, I don't have training, I, yes, we can talk about ideas, and they have helped us through a lot of. Since we've been involved, I fear.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve these additions?
I'll make a motion to accept the addition. I'll second.
Oh, this is favor.
I'm.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, then we'll go to Park County, okay, okay, and then we'll, given that. My apologies, the lady, but, you know, quite a few of us here represent the Fountain County story committee and the Cades Mill project, and we've asked Tom Clecker, who is the director of Western Indiana Regional Landmarks, if that's correct, to speak on our behalf before we go into the finances. We had, you had given us a directive at the meeting, so that we could advance, and we were prepared of that now. Tom Clecker?
And my apologies. Uh, long trip. Fair, fair, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you this morning, Indiana Landmarks has been supporting the Fountain County Art Council and its store committee in its efforts to raise funding to repair and rehabilitate Cades Mill Covered Bridge. Uh, in that effort, we provided financial assistance, technical assistance, moral support, cheerleading as needed, uh, but we've also recognized the significance of the bridge and its importance to not just Fountain County, but to Indiana, by listing it on our ten most endangered places list for twenty twenty-three. Uh, that listing was intended to raise awareness about the importance, significance of the bridge, Indiana's oldest covered bridge and its official location, uh, the importance of the bridge to our cultural heritage, uh, the fact that it is a, a rare historic landmark for Fountain County and Western Indiana. I know you've got Park County down here as a covered bridge capital, but there's great opportunity, obviously, for Fountain County to take advantage of the tourism there. Heritage tourism is economic development, Indiana Landmarks believes that, preservation is economic development, it's the opportunity for Cades Mill Covered Bridge to be a catalyst for promoting heritage tourism in Fountain County, its covered bridges, the amazing cultural resources that it has. So the ten most listing was intended to help raise awareness, uh, strengthen efforts to fundraise, uh, Indiana Landmarks also really supports the Fountain County Art Council and Historical Committee and its request for funding from the county. To note, it is a county-owned historic resource, the county is responsible for managing, uh, county-owned properties. It's really fortunate, uh, that the county has a nonprofit organization as committed as this group has been, to be able to raise the amount of funding that it has already, I know several other counties that would take advantage of that in a heartbeat. So I hope that as the request is made before you this morning, that you will take into account the significance of the bridge, its rarity, its importance, not just again to Fountain County, but to Indiana, uh, and the fact that it remains on our ten most endangered list, and so we see what we consider to be a state for Cades Mill Covered Bridge, thank you.
Your formal name. The name of the party is who? Who?
Two.
I thought we did, I don't know if we did.
I can't remember what we did, Henry, I'm sorry.
We're having a meeting in April, they gave me information about, we, the county would put up two hundred and ten, uh, we put up the remaining hundred and sixty from the VS engineering, repairing, painting the bridge. We were told a couple of weeks ago that you wanted in writing how the council would pay for this special money, and we went to last week's council meeting, and they reaffirmed that the, uh, yearly point oh oh five assessment. For cumulative funds in February of twenty was for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, of approximately forty to forty-five thousand a year, and they passed a motion last week. That they would approve those three years of tax collection for that fund, plus they would approve another thirty-six thousand from the cumulative capital development fund, and that equals a hundred and eighty. So if you'd request that hundred and eighty plus our parts, when the VS engineering specs are done in August, we could go out and formally bid it. And that will cover the painting, but right now, we just want to get the understructure, the siding, the portals repaired, and then hopefully donations, or they don't use all the sixty thousand in contingency to cover the painting. So I guess today we're requesting that you request the county council for a hundred and eighty thousand to this bridge.
I thought we had already approved that two hundred and fifty thousand as commander.
When we were here, May meeting, at the beginning of May. We were instructed to. They were instructed to come back because they need to go to council, because I think there was some miscommunication, maybe like miscommunication as far as, um, what fund can we contribute to them, because it was in question, since it's not a usable bridge, can we use key bridge funds? That was some of the confusion, and so we wanted, and we wanted to clarify that, is that correct, Kent?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
Jason, does that affect your current bridge?
We didn't know.
Okay.
Maybe, we can take it out, we weren't going to take it out a huge, we're going to take it out of the capital.
Okay.
That purchase of sound now did, we discussed it, that's how we wanted to get it.
Okay, okay.
And both motions kind of seven to zero by the council last Monday, so I guess we're requesting, formally request a hundred and eighty thousand.
I'll make a motion to, uh, request a hundred and eighty thousand for. Uh, request a hundred and eighty thousand for Cades Mill Covered Bridge.
Sorry.
Oh, this is neighbor.
Hi.
Thank you very much and.
Of course.
I'm trying to act with respect, so we're ready to do it and see what the bids are. So.
Is that. Who's your engineering department BS?
BS.
Will they handle the advertising bids and all that?
That's part of our payment with them is they do the specs and then they'll. Advertise solicit vendors and then review the bids and then do the inspection.
Mr. Clecker wasn't here when we were talking about economic development before he came in, but this is really a very important. Aspect when we look back at the things Fountain County has had historically that we kind of brushed, brushed away some. New Wallace offers to go claim to. We know that he came and grew up in Fountain and we know his mother was buried there. They sent Luke her, but she was buried here initially. We lost her and then Mr. Hannigan, who was. United States Senator in Fountain County and was governor of the presidency. Those are very important historical facts that. Kind of washed over and don't pay attention to. But all the other counties around us really emphasize those things and make money on those things. And really, things like Cades Mill Bridge and promote some of these things that those are key to economic development as well.
Look at the amount of money that is kind of the Park County over the years from.
Exactly, exactly. 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 We appreciate your support. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
And she was certainly, I still couldn't get her. That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the department has. Right here from ambulance. Garden.
Right here.
Do you know if you have something you want to say?
This is that we got our new board for the month's week. That is.
We, we are all were able to let us that.
It's nice.
Yeah, that's very nice.
Very nice. We've got a little apprehension here, but once they got to lay down, it was very, very nice.
Yeah, okay.
So we may have to come back later and maybe change the paint on the walls to white gray that that's down the road, but at least the board is down. Yep, so. That's, that's all I had. No, they're paying for me.
No.
Okay. So what are they doing?
Uh, they're working. Yes. Uh, any issues at all?
Sheriff? Thank you, not here.
No.
Okay, Jason?
There's something wonderful. Thanks. Uh, we were at one river road, parent and Dave. Community crossings, I replaced a couple of pipes and, uh, we ran across a structure that, um. Was undermined, really looked bad and built a hole on top of pavement. Uh. We had the guys take a look at it and referred, uh, Tim Taylor from TNT Concrete to go take a look at this. The estimate, uh, twenty-three thousand eight hundred plus minus about a thousand. Uh, he's going to go do that this week for us before, so we can just get everything ready to go. Um, so that will be taking place. We're going to try to have that open. By three o'clock, close it from eight to three through. Tuesday through Friday, so.
There's no sign out there.
Yeah, we'll have.
Yeah, we'll have a danger for.
From what, what are they doing that next week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. Yep. Wait till bus.
So Jason and I, we know the, we know the great.
Yeah, I'm not running now.
Yeah, so that's taking place. We should start getting paper.
Thanks for any support, community crossings, Brandon here, just another thing, but, um, just we can go ahead and open up bids and then, um. USI has gotten documents prepared for Bridge Fifty-four on Scott Sales. So, um, we're going to start taking bids for that and we would like to open those. I think it should be the most possible. Is that going to be okay?
And that's those games.
Yes, yes, I guess. Um. I do have, what should we? Mike Sures had, uh, talked to a couple of the guys there, um, a couple of weeks ago about Kate's cemetery. Uh, about an erosion problem back in the creek, from the very back of the cemetery. Um, I'm going to warn your jurisdiction. Highways jurisdiction starts and stops.
And that's, that would be the township trustee is responsible for the cemeteries?
That's, that's what we were thinking, but. What their, their concern is. The erosion because it looks like they've been in their clearance of trees that one time and they damped it. How long ago the trees were cut, but it started to erode the bank out. They're worried about somebody that has lost maybe. In a way, so.
Are you being close to your right of way?
No, we're this way, way off. Being past.
If they, if they fall within a regulated train, I could probably do something about that, but that's low chances that it is.
Yeah, there's.
Not effective commissioner, probably deal with that and that.
We, we don't have material on. What needs to be done, I don't know. We wouldn't look at it and it's. It's all the starting room.
And, and it's based on the case that we've had in, in, in Crawfordville, where a little cemetery that's within the city. It's. There's, it's the township jurisdiction and there's, they work close to the. Cemetery law is really DNR and I think the township should have. Resource through the state and through their normal process for that's really in their jurisdiction.
This, this is Paige Diller. But this is your question. I don't believe so.
Oh, okay.
And all towns now?
Yes. And he's still.
Yeah.
Um, it's, he gave it all, operation report in last year's. That's really all I have. There's a few some kind of boxes for to have. Yeah, we were, we did receive, yeah, discussing questions.
So on, on Hillback Road, we submitted that application to NRCS, um. They counted it to DNR also, so I'm waiting on responses from there. So anything that crossed the road that has entered NRCS, right now we can't touch.
Okay.
But if you're ready to place that ridge, that's within your right of way. You could do that anytime you want to.
Yeah, I think we want to apply all of it too. Later in the year to do that. That way we'll, we've got pavements and chips coming up and other things that are really needing to get done.
I can plug the right.
Jason does that in, you know, it's a scary road. Where exactly is that?
Yeah.
There's no really good way to it. Does it have sign?
And it sits back off the road.
Yes.
Way back.
Yeah, there's two fields.
Yeah.
You're getting that long.
Back towards twelve grade, back to the west.
Yes. Yeah, I don't.
He's looking at, uh, no, I know Andrew's mentioned because he drives buses on every day or sees it, but that Xavier Road looks nice. That paving. Unbelievable.
Well, both of them, there are two places now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, yeah, one just recently. Yeah, both of them look good, but. That's awesome stuff.
Yeah, so.
Nice white rock alongside. Yeah, it was great.
Thank you.
A river is going to be so nice.
Yeah.
As ever, it's a disaster. Did you ever talk to anybody down? Those cowboys?
We did. They cleaned up their messes that they had.
Good. Yeah, they made a disaster. I just wanted to stop and catch a little camera.
It was very glassy and they have cleaned up everything and we got to keep the lines out of the bottom of the ditch and the backside of the ditch.
Good.
Uh, whether they do or not, we'll see.
Yeah.
Right now, it's busy.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it.
My, 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 hi.
Danny and Eric.
Morning.
Good morning.
I don't really have much to this. I'm sure you're aware that the government public health commission passed. Um, I should receive, uh, those follow-up notes today. It's going to be tight often. Okay.
Were you really want to watch that video? Uh, I did forward on, um, Stephanie Hager had sent out a newsletter with. Video and. I haven't had a chance to watch it, so.
The one for the, uh, council and commissioner, yes. I haven't watched that one. I'm on weekly meetings with him anyway.
Um, yeah. I'm sure they covered it, but you know, she wanted to get that really well out there because a lot of people didn't have time to. Rather, you have the rather as much. Okay, anything for us?
Other than everything up there is running so smooth, we don't hear any actual compliments on the front office.
Yes, good. Glad to hear that.
Yes.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Let her please hear that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, Carol.
When's the option? Be on that for the, um, deeper.
That, we need to talk about that here.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, a little bit. It won't be delayed because of the county farm. We have issues there on survey, not surveying on.
Property lines.
Property line, yeah. So we are, I'm offering that a very integral.
Okay. Yeah, that's, thank you. I'm glad.
Patty here.
Hi. You have some. I just kind of live there and we updated on the election.
Sure.
Result of being served like today. Uh, we mostly went off without a hitch. Like you got that morning and heard the wifi and got our backup plan and version. I have a possible four thousand seventy-two millipol voter between Aga and Hudson combined. There was only eighty percent. People show up. So.
Oh.
It, it was.
Seventeen percent wasn't.
To that point and it's. It's a long day, a lot of work for no more turnout.
But this is it though, right?
This is different. Comes in, I get. Comes in, I think, came in. Um. And Hillsborough all have moved their elections to the even year elections. So Petersburg, a lot, Newtown, Wallace. I'm not. I know, I know that. I went to their announcement meeting and they wrote, you know, and that was like a couple of years ago, but. They may be interested after, right, as of right now, Petersburg does, I mean, a lot of Newtown, Wallace have. Action in years. Um, they basically try to find people to say yes and this kind of, you know, this buddy. They re-conquer, they resign. It's not that you just talk and stand there. Um, with Petersburg, they do the town conventions. As of right now, they're not going to have to have one, but. There is a fifth member of the current city board that has not signed up. So if he signs up, then they'll have a convention, a Republican town convention in August. Um, and then we know whether they'll have to have an election. We will have to have an election in November for Kevin. Because as of right now, there is one invested race. I'm not going to have to get up. So. But yeah, no, they'll, you know, they'll start running in the even year, so.
Awesome.
My next project is record intervention, so. Cause I can get the judge, it's got a date on that. Let us know. You probably know. Okay.
Brian, before we move to landfill, I just want to discuss the, uh, there's a trailer that might be replaced at the lake. There's a question whether it's within the flood zone or not, and if there has a two foot free or replacement of the trailer. The date up between DNR and myself and. There's a website. You put the location of the trailer and whether if it moves, order of an extension, this elevation, exact elevation is not known. It's questionable. Then has been part of that process. We got to the point where. If they put the trailer back where they want to put it, it could potentially be enough to an area of feedback. So. My last email and I'm going to acknowledge that is that we have to opt for this point. One is for the trailer owner to do an elevation certificate, which means you get a vast survey that goes out there. Gives you exact elevation. We'll compare it to DNR and we know whether it's in the flood zone or not. And that will cost over two thousand dollars to do something like that. And the negative of that is that potentially you could lead him right back to where we are today, which is. You may be in the flood when you get this on there with it. Or option two was, my recommendation was if the owner wants to put the trailer back where he wants it. I would recommend that he indemnifies the county with any liability. That's his choice to put it there. I send that email and I copy pen on it. I just want to make sure. That we're covered. So if something happens in that filler plug, they don't come back. So the county gave you permission. And that's the county's problem.
And they haven't tracked it. You see the form she put together.
Yeah, I, yeah, she's, she put a form together for the sign.
Okay.
So.
I'm repeating it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just important for us to cover ourselves and build this great areas so that we come back and buy that. That.
We have a. Your major.
But no.
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 Okay.
Great.
Great. You're. You're it.
Uh, they're pretty much done. He seeded what he done, uh. It looks great. I mean, once grassed it, which would be really nice. And the way the weather's been this year already, crash and titch and it's starting to pop up there, right?
And beat the weeds.
The only, yeah, the only thing I have to do is I'll be working on as well. I'm rolling the pack right now. I've got South Cap done. I can work on the North Cap. And I'm using their roller and then, uh. Move some of that concrete to make sure it's off of the, uh, right way, the right way, so that, uh, they can do what they need to do when they want to do it. So. And I'll probably separate the concrete down a little bit so that a very big step will be in one area and the little stuff be in the other area. That way if I would need something to use. So, yeah, but that's all that's going on. Aaron said it is, is it a voice of my process that's so. We don't get, we need to. Split that and. Unfortunately. That right way.
That, that fan.
Yeah. This one, the, the, and those, what do you mean, the degree, once that's split there and then. I heard that the council would be the ones that had to put that back on the payments, right? Now to put it back in, because that turned out, I'm thinking, I don't have it. It's not that.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're, okay. They're, they're on. Colleen approved that and said the final, the attorneys want to do it and, uh. So yeah, well, they're, they're on, they're on page twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars. It's just in, in the process. Right. And Colleen and said, yes, that'd be the easiest way to do it.
Right, okay, that's fine. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, uh, Kent is wanting to explain the issues with the county farm. Hey Kent, let me give a quick update on the McDonald's thing. Okay, we'll do this. I did the final inspection on the McDonald's brand. If you guys drive by, full stop and take a look at it. I have. It looks amazing. It looks very good. We came in, I think, Colleen, I sent you the invoice. We came in two thousand below what we originally cost it at. And the reason for that is we piled the soil up into the field. We didn't spread it. The farmer didn't want to spread it. Mr. McDonald called me and asked me if he could either sell the soil or take the soil off the field. Um, somebody wanted it and I told them if it's on his field, he can do whatever he wants with it. But the field that is not his, which is the majority of the soil, he can't touch without permission of the owner or the field manager or whatever. But it really looks great. If you guys drive by their stuff and take a look at it. It's running beautifully. Okay, that's how all our legal friends do it.
Yeah.
Okay, the, um, everybody knows we started the process to follow the package for the county to sell two different properties. We had the public hearings on the priority of the sale and then the commissioners determined that was. Uh, follow the other part of the statute to have an auctioneer handling the, the advertising and after the sale. In the due diligence, so once that happened, we started due diligence on, uh, title work and. Remaining legal issues and in the due diligence, we determined on the county farm property that there is a. Uh, potential cloud that going title or an approach from issue or both. And as a result. I, I recommend and it, it makes for efficiency sake. Um, in keeping the properties together to have a sale at the same time makes the most sense and that's the way the auctioneer wants to handle it because of the. Issue on the county farm property that, um, there are. Resolution that we can, uh, I give you my advice privately, um, but. Recommend that we, you guys table or spend the advertised sale in the nineteen, it can't go forward with the issue on the county farm property as it is right now.
I'm like motion.
Table, we can.
Hold this in favor.
Aye.
Anything else, anybody else?
Make a motion, those.